Try it again. I'll call the March 28th, 2019 Town of Northwood Plan Board Meeting to Order at 6:40 present. Joe McCaffrey, Select Persons Rep Beth Boudreau, Lee Baldwin, Bob Strobel, Town Staff. We have minutes of February 28th to go over? We have a single pager? We can wait on that.
They're on March 14th.
They are on March 14th?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Just wanted to double check.
So that's correction.
That's okay. March 14th, dated, the page in front of you marked minutes. And I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Would you approve the minutes?
Okay, and second?
Second.
Okay, my motion, but I missed Baldwin, second by Mr. McCaffrey. I'll call you by your first name.
Long week, huh?
And I'll open it up for any changes. Anybody have anything, aside from the date? Which is very easily understood and done. Okay, hearing none. Although in favor of the minutes as written, or as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. And Joe, abstain.
As I was not present for that.
Not present, okay. We have a preliminary conceptual consultation with Fatherland Family Trust. Would you come to the table, please?
Can I ask you, help the board?
Sure. It's always good to take a look at what you have.
For the board, my name is Joe Hutter, Trumpet Bulk Parkly across the street on the Harmony Hill Road.
Okay. And could you say your last name again?
Carter, C-A-R-T-E-R. And assuming you try us, the first one's an A and whatever.
Sorry, Gary.
You don't have the headphones on. Don't you behave like that?
Yeah. Gary didn't bring his earplugs.
Either I'm gonna be listening to that, or helping out.
Thank you very much.
Share?
Share.
Okay.
One more.
That's okay. Sometimes it's easier.
Show us the full address.
Come prepare.
This is, this is a new concept of an old, old plan that we approved in 1990.
Okay. I'm gonna have to stop you there. Would you take a seat? And I need you to talk, take a seat and I need you to talk into the microphone. Or Gary's gonna come down and...
I'm a little, I left my hearing aid, the battery went dead, so I'm a little hard to hear.
Actually, James, could you maybe turn that microphone around?
Okay.
That's better.
Can you hear me okay now?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. In 1990, this was the approved plan. That was, that's the, on the, that's the same site with three buildings on it, with about 42 parking spaces.
That works a little too well.
It's a little too well? Push it backwards.
My ears are falling.
Brian driving you out of the place?
You're doing good.
Okay. It basically, the entrance is already there. It was built by the state. I paid for it. And drained within, was brought to subgrade. The pond was dredged, I don't know whether it was completely dredged or not, the fire pond. There was a lot of work done, but the buildings never got done. And at one point, I sold it to a contractor down on Point Trinity Drive, and he was gonna develop that. And he didn't, he was just trying to double his money of what he paid me. And I had to take it back.
Okay.
So basically, it's what you see on the corner of Harmony Hill Road, and the entrance you see is there. And it's grown in a little, but basically, I've reduced the parking, I've reduced the paved area. And I think it's a better site than it was, that we had planned originally. It's more environmentally attuned, less parking, more green space. And what I'm proposing is a mini golf course, eight-hole golf course, that would be built by Harris Company. They'd built 800 of them. And I could pass this around. I mean, and on page five, I've already consulted with them, is basically what I would be looking to do. It's not really commercial-looking, more in keeping with the area, I think. Could I pass that around?
Sure.
What I was, in that pink area, that would be the dry, the golf range.
Okay.
Yeah, the estimated cost for it is between $200,000 and $300,000. And they would build it complete, the Cherokee operation, where they do it.
And looking at your plan, CH there in the center is clubhouse?
The pink area is where that would be.
Right. But the, right below the pink area where you have CH labeled is clubhouse?
Yeah, the clubhouse, yeah.
Just double check.
Yeah, the green area is the pond in the wetland over on the west side.
It's adorable.
Looks like you've got plenty of parking.
I had two concepts. I had a, I drew it on preliminary with the driving golf range out front and the parking in the back coming off of the corner of the Harmony Hill Road. But I didn't know which one would be most aesthetically pleasing to the board, so I found it with this one.
Okay.
That would, actually currently, just to say, that would be Harmony Road. The hill part is not part of the road designation, but that's maybe earlier, when this was done. Can I, a few questions?
Sure.
So you're anticipating...
Well, let me clarify to be sure for everybody here, to everybody at the table. This is a preliminary consult.
Right.
So whatever is said is not, on either side is non-binding.
Right.
I'm just, you're aware of it, and we should keep our comments at high level.
Sure. Yeah, this is not part of the approval, this is just to get information, because somebody is proposing something, which you can take a look at later if you want to, to see. So you're anticipating how many potential customers? You're allowing, what I see there, maybe somewhere in the order of 30?
Thirty-four. Thirty-four parking spaces.
Where did I, I'm looking for that number, is it, where is it?
It's eight plus eight plus eighteen.
What?
In the circles.
So...
Oh yeah, no, I see that. But I mean, was there a total number somewhere?
No, I just added.
Okay. And that's just roughly based on previous experience of this builder who's done these before?
Harris has built 800, if you read the literature on that, they built 800 of them.
So he has some experience, yep.
They're one of the best builders there are. They design and they build. It's a charity. I wouldn't be building it, they'll build it.
Right.
Okay.
So something, I mean, this is just an approximation of what you might expect.
Yes.
And you're allowing 30 some odd spaces?
Thirty spaces, we hope we get about 15 an hour.
That's great.
And it's only open, it'll be open, say, from nine till seven, and six months of the year.
Particularly on the weekend, I would assume.
The weekend would be the busy time, I'm sure.
Right.
But would be limited to that number of parking, and then after that, we'd just have to, and then that sliding gate at the front would be closed off.
Well, that's what I was wondering, there just is, is let's say you were fabulously successful, and parking, and, yeah, sure. And the parking lot fills up, the tendency of some people is to try to maybe park along the road, which would not be acceptable here.
Post-it, no parking. And there's a deceleration lane and acceleration lane already there, that was part of the original approval.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. This goes back, how much, there's a pond there now, there's a, you show it as marsh, and it's a water, it's a...
In the blue is the pond.
Yes.
It's a fire pond.
I drive by this about six times a day.
Excuse me, that's a fire pond. We were supposed to put in a dry hydrant, which never got in, which I proposed to put back, but yeah, that part of it.
Your land goes, includes that water area?
Yes, it's the whole site, yeah.
As the, as the water comes through the culvert there under Harmony Road?
Right. I think you replaced the culvert since the original plan. There was a, I think it was just a 48-inch, I think you, probably many years ago, you replaced it, and I gave it easement to the state, all the way down from Route Four down to that culvert.
Okay.
It's an easement on fire.
Yeah, that original culvert failed pretty seriously, I guess, who am I?
I put the pipe in, I did, but I had Bates put it, which I, a lot of, I don't know if he's still around. Mr. Bates and Mike Anthony were working down there.
Uh-huh. Would you be altering the wetland water?
No, stay the same height, let's say.
If it needed to be dredged, I would dredge some more.
I don't know whether they ever finished dredging it or not.
Would there be much filling to create, in your judgment, and as far as what this fellow, Harris, does? In the pink area on your plan, would that require a lot of filling or grade work?
It's almost a grade, it'd be a small cut up, up on the contour from, I don't have one, I get right here, excuse me.
On the bottom.
Actually, it's almost a grade, that whole piece, that was gonna be a part of the parking to the original subdivision. It was brought to the grades that are shown on this plan, subgrade.
Okay.
So it's mostly graded, there is some fill at the end, towards Harmony Hill Road, at the pot, for the parking, up above, the parking at, towards this, towards Harmony Hill Road, the, let's see where the contours drop off. The last, probably 20 feet has to be filled.
You're referring to as it approaches Harmony Hill Road, the parking lot, as it approaches that site?
Yeah, as that, as the top parking lot approaches Harmony Hill Road, the contours drop off there, that needs to be filled.
Yeah.
But there's enough on the site to fill it.
So from what you're saying, I mean, I'm just, I'm not asking for a hard conclusion, but the grading that's there now is pretty much...
Pretty much to grade, yeah. There wouldn't be any grading to speak of from the pink line to the pond. And, and most of the pink is to grade.
Mm-hmm.
You can see, I've put some spot grades on there, so it's, like I said, the only real change is that, at that end, towards Harmony Hill Road.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see, I put a riprap all along there, riprap stone, slope, one of the one.
What about the service road access that you show on Harmony Road? Is that intended? Is that necessary? Is that...
It was part of the approval on the original plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a service road, that's not gonna be access.
Right.
On, on this particular proposal, I had done a different proposal. I didn't show, I didn't bring it, and you didn't see it.
That's fine.
But I had reversed what I have here, I had the parking below, and the golf driving up above, but on the road, and I said, uh, probably could be in a cross from the town hall.
This is your preferred proposal?
I think you would, I would too, if I lived here. You wouldn't see it. This is down, this is about an eight-foot drop from the top level where the clubhouse is and that, that stone riprap wall, to the, to the driving range. So you really wouldn't see it from the road, and it would be fenced along that side, so it wouldn't be visible to the neighbors. And the tree line would be staying there. All the trees along that side would stay there.
Along Harmony?
Along Harmony Roads. Everything outside that pink area would be left the way it is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's tends to be...
It was all stripped bare back in 1989, 1990. And I, we, I've owned it since 1970.
Okay.
Other than that two-year span, and they bought it, and they didn't do anything, tried to resell it at double the price.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to get your input on it, and go whichever way you want me to go.
Well, we're not, I don't know, anybody here's a golf, mini golf course designer, but no.
There's, there's nothing I see that...
Can I leave these, and you people can discuss it? I can leave all the prints, and you all, if you wanna compare it, in another meeting, get me, tell me what you want.
Want to take a better look? We can leave at least one.
Yeah.
Anything jumps out at you, James?
Nothing immediately jumps out at me as you being a problem or anything of concern for redesign. Yeah, we would want a letter from DOT as part of the approval, just confirming that the existing driveway curb cut is still adequate, but if it was installed by DOT with XL and DCL lanes, I can't imagine them having any problem.
Same.
They, they built it for me.
Right.
Right.
And I have a permit for it.
Do you know, offhand, I may be overlooking it, the distance from the entrance gate to the intersection with Harmony there?
The intersection?
Of the, the, the existing intersection that's been paved there? You underestimate the distance? Well, just approximately, I don't need...
Yeah, I got a minute.
Yeah, okay.
Couple hundred, about 150 feet, I'd say.
All right.
This is the middle of the entrance, and there's 120, and 70, 190, 200 feet.
From the entrance gate...
And they do. You gotta hold it for yourself.
Watch out. I've, I've done that a few times. So from the entrance gate to the Harmony?
About 150 feet.
Roughly 200 feet would take it to the intersection. Right to the edge, not to the intersection. Be about, actually, the middle of Harmony Hill Road would be about another 40 feet, about 240 feet.
Okay. Well, he's measuring with that, so, yeah.
The total frontage of the lot is 329.
Okay. And this was, when this was originally set up for access, when the, when the driveways were designated, or the driveway was designated?
This is the existing driveway, and that's what this designated, and it was for 42 cars, if you look at the original permit.
Okay, and that original purpose, when the, when the state approved it, was also for golf?
No, the original permit that I have...
Yep.
Is for three buildings, office building in there, with 42 parking spaces. And this parking, all you see at the top, it's just, it was on that plan for the, for the office building.
Mm-hmm.
But we had parking below, which I don't have anymore.
Right.
If, I have the plan, they have the plan here.
Okay.
But basically, it was about 42 spaces. The rest of this, with 30 up here, or 25 in the old plan, all the rest were done in that pink area.
Okay, so you're occupying what would now be the...
Now, now it'll be grassed-in area and...
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Again.
Any other questions?
Good job. You know if the parking is gonna be paved or not?
I wasn't, I'm just going to pave, if you look at the plan here.
Uh-huh.
Just what you see in the haze, the actual parking stalls, I was gonna use a piece though.
Okay.
What you see is a haze.
Okay, so you're thinking of the pavement there. Do you know how far that is from the property line?
Well, 25, the parking spaces are 10 by 20.
Okay.
And that's the five support buffers.
Okay, we're good. Our, our one concern was...
And that would be all landscape.
Right, our one concern was the front setback with the parking, if the parking won't be paved...
I didn't think you'd want a lot of paving.
You're considering the pavement as a structure?
Preferably not. Right, we're, we're considering whether it's a structure, so if the parking spaces themselves weren't paved, then they wouldn't be structures, and they could be in the setback.
Yeah.
If they were paved, then you wouldn't be able to have them in that setback.
Yeah, on the original plan, this, that was all paved, and below was paved, so we lost about, we're down to a third of what the paving was on the original approval.
Okay. And you might need a waiver to have parking in that area under the site plan regulations, but that would be easier to get, that would just be part of your site plan approval, instead of having to go through and get a variance.
I thought it was just parking, white pavement.
Right.
Getting more impervious area by paving it.
Exactly.
And then, there's not a lot of scuffing and everything, and just turning in off the paving. But now, that's only 10,000 square feet of paving in a whole fight, two acres, where it's four. I took the little list over here where it was at one time. Just a little off, off the title and the legend.
Thank you.
You need a much better use of the site.
Well, it's a more friendly one in the sense of...
Environmentally, I need a lot better, you would add.
It's a nice little pond area, I know a couple of ducks that like it.
Commercial?
With the office park, you'd have a big surge of parking at seven, probably the seven or nine in the morning, and three to five at night.
Right.
This way, it would be dispersed probably 10 to 15 an hour.
Well, I would observe this, and I mean, we'll, we'll talk about it again. Essentially, your most activity is likely to be weekends, that would be my assumption, but you're saying that, and that seems to make sense. When I look at, there's a number of, there's a mini golf over in Epsom, and there's, there's a couple of them.
Where's the other one? There's one down on the little...
Oh, in Chi Chester.
There's one in Chi Chester.
Chi Chester, that's, that's actually what I meant.
That's the one I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, their activity is pretty slight during the week, and that's when we get a lot of our commuter traffic.
Right, you get a lot of traffic out there.
Yeah. So morning and evening, but weekends, it slacks off, 'cause it's a different kind of traffic. And, and a lot of people are recreation and so forth, and this is kind of appropriate to that, so.
And the plus is, this will only be open six months of the year.
Right.
Never gonna be plowed, or they're gonna be open.
Right.
The gate will close.
Ice skating maybe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carter.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll leave these for you, so you can look them over, talk about it, and maybe you can get back to me.
Sure.
Let me know.
Full forward, any comments to James, and it onto you, maybe.
I can get you some color photographs of this if you want.
That's good enough.
I can't wait to go golf.
Thank you.
You should go.
We're gonna need a crosswalk for the town hall and...
I know, it'll be so fun.
I said, we need a crosswalk for the town hall and...
So see, mini golfing, then Johnson's for ice cream later, there you go.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next case is an old, existing case of 18-13, Fledgewood Realty Trust, Millstone Realty Trust.
We had a request to continue.
We did.
I have them right here.
Figured I'll take care of that one first.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Take care of both.
Thank you for the consideration.
Oh, yes.
I almost thought of Reed taking it in, but he was already here. I've been handed a letter dated March 27th, 2019. This is Northwood Administrator, Town of Northwood. Dear Linda, we have been working on the excavation site plans now, and have those plans done, with the exception of a few seasonal process. We will be finishing those plans by the end of this week, so we can send them to the reviewer for the town, because we have not submitted those plans to the reviewer as of this letter. I would request that the planning board postpone the meeting scheduled for March 28th, 2019, to be April 25th, 2019 meeting. This would give the reviewer time to review the plans, and would actually give us some time to react to the reviewer's additional comments. If you have any questions on this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Peter Holden. So there they are. Another one dated March 26th, to Northwood Planning Board Chair. I'm writing to request that the hearing scheduled for March 28th, 2019 be postponed to the regulatory, regularly scheduled meeting in April. We are currently assessing all options for secondary access point. Whoops, wrong one. Sorry, next case.
Second.
I was wondering why you handed me two at once.
Was that the one that's been...
Disregard that.
Been put off?
So, Taco, case 18-13, has requested a continuance to April 25th, and it would take a motion to do so.
Motion to do so.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of continuing case 18-13 to April 25th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. Give this back to you. Case is 18-21, 68 Granite Street Properties LLC. And I have another letter dated, the one that I started to read before incorrectly, from Richard D. Bartlett and Associates, March 26th, 2019. Dear Chairman and members of the board, I am writing to request that the hearing scheduled for March 28th, 2019 be postponed to the regularly scheduled meeting in April. We are currently assessing all options for a secondary access point to the property, and will be presenting revised plans in April. Thank you for consideration, Marcus, Marcus Sargent, LLS, Project Manager. So 168 Granite Street is also requesting a continuance to April 25th.
Motion to continue to April 25th on case 18-20.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. Continue to next one. I expected to see you leave, but I guess not.
No.
It's okay.
I don't see it's like.
You're welcome.
I don't see what it's like.
We don't...
Thanks, Ben.
Okay.
Are you gonna run next year?
I'm like, I, I, no, I'm still walking.
Well, you might make it by next year, then.
I'm telling you, I, I've got a tough future, I'm happy with it.
Okay.
But these spin.
I know.
So we are, next case is 19-2 Unified Properties LLC. Can you give me those, give those a push? I want to go. Wait long enough for the reading process.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm waiting in the table.
Okay. Okay. The board has had a chance to take a look at this application last two weeks ago, and we would need a vote of completeness to open it up, if somebody wanted to make one. Or a discussion of, same.
Are you talking about opening it?
Yes. Just needed...
Well, make a motion to open the...
No, pardon.
Find it complete, Joe.
Find it, sir.
Find it complete.
Find it's complete, though, okay, but I'm, doesn't, as we know, that doesn't necessarily mean it was in every regard, but 1920, or 192-2, I'm sorry.
19-2, yes.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
So motion by Ms. McCaffrey, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Boudreaux. Discussion on completeness. Hearing none, all those in favor of finding nineteen dash two complete, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Joe? I didn't see your lips move, it's okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
So we are, those of four in favor, none opposed, so we are open. And I will open case nineteen dash two Unified Properties. And I'll read the abutters list. If you are here in the audience, please both raise your hand and say something, so I know you're here, as I call your name. Daniel Tasker of Northwood. Luna State's Cooperative of Northwood. Colleen O'Connor and John Gilbert of Northwood. Hannah Wallaston of Northwood. Melissa Bridge of Northwood. Linda Smith of Northwood. I can answer that one for yourself. And just note for the record, if it wasn't obvious, that Ms. Smith has stepped away from the table. Okay, why don't you introduce yourselves and give us an overview?
Good evening, I'm Attorney Matthew Schumaker, I represent Unified Properties, this is Nathan Cowes, managing member of Unified Properties. Uh, we're appearing before you via a letter of authorization from the property owner Frederick Vega, which you should have a copy of. Uh, we're here seeking minor site plan approval for fourteen forty six First New Hampshire Turnpike, uh, for a change of use from two residential units and one commercial unit to three residential units. Uh, there will be no changes to the layout of the property and, uh, this is being done just for, for background and context, this is being done in contemplation of a sale to my client. Uh, my client just wants to make sure that he has everything tied up before he goes through with the purchase.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions from the board?
I'm gonna ask a few questions.
Sure.
Since Mr. Burton attended the zoning board meeting, uh, this week, there were a number of issues were brought up.
Sure, so a few procedural things, um, what you have in front of you is a minor site plan, even though no, um, exterior alterations to the site are proposed, uh, the site plan regulations indicate that, uh, change of use to multifamily residential has to be a minor site plan, um, so as is the case with a lot of things that just miss out on being a minimal impact, you do have some waivers in front of you, um, essentially to accept an application with the same materials that would normally be required for minimal impact. Residential density is what kicked this in front of the ZBA, um, typically for three units of residential, a minimum of six acres are required, the proposed site is four point nine four five, I believe, um, so in order to have that third unit, they did need a variance, um, to not meet that minimum six acre lot size. That was granted by the ZBA on Monday with four conditions of approval, uh, one that between the three proposed units, there'd be no more than seven bedrooms, uh, two, that the acquisition of all state and local permits, uh, or all state and local permits will be acquired and copies delivered to the town, that's typically something that you would also require as a condition of approval. Um, the two in question would be, um, uh, state approved septic design and DOT confirmation that the driveway can accommodate the proposed change in use. Three, um, that the livable area of the building will not be expanded beyond the current footprint of the structure as it sits, uh, essentially the ZBA was concerned about potential future, um, expansion and increasing the intensity of the residential use beyond what is already being approved for a variance. And then D, access to the site will be via the paved driveway that's depicted on the plan and not that gravel driveway that's depicted coming off of Old Turnpike Road. As I then note in bullet three under site access, no driveway permit was issued for that gravel driveway, so in our opinion, it is not a driveway. While it would normally be the planning board's purview to discuss, uh, site access and whether or not they could in the future get a driveway permit from the town to access from there, in this case, your hands are tied because the ZBA said as a condition, access must be from Route four. And then finally, the issue of septic, um, our understanding is that the septic system is currently in failure, uh, so where we would normally be willing to accept a letter from a licensed septic designer saying that the change in use can be accommodated by the septic system, in this case, we would specifically be looking for a state approved septic design as a condition of approval, um, subsequent to the signing of plans.
So there would be, based on what you just said, there'd be no, no access, ZBA's approval allows no access, uh, from Old Turnpike Road.
Correct.
The access that exists to the, um, the turnpike is, uh, isn't that partly shared by?
To Route four, you mean?
Hmm?
To Route four, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, just double checking, you said Turnpike and I.
Yes, but just to distinguish from Old Turnpike, yes.
Right.
The, um, but to Route four, let's just stick with that, um, isn't that shared by the other two residences that are there now?
Shared by one.
Shared by, there's an easement noted on the blueprint or the drawing.
Yeah, I didn't look at.
Okay.
And my understanding is that that is a record, duly recorded easement.
Yeah.
That's already in place.
I would think, did I get a building permit, an occupancy permit that would be required? Although we didn't see, see that application.
The residents there now are using the Old Turnpike Road situation, so that would be abandoned, that would be, in what fashion would that be?
So you'll note that one of my, or several of my condition, or recommended conditions of approval, one, I'm suggesting that we remove any mention of that driveway from the plan, um, before we have the final plan signed, so that there's no confusion looking at the site plan, and two, that we install some type of landscaping or other barrier to discourage access from that point. I'm not particularly concerned about what it is, so long as it doesn't look like that's an entrance anymore and people are discouraged from using it.
All right, the, I see there's no mention, my, though, I'm surprised it didn't come up, what, did not the fire department, um, find a number of failures, a number of, uh?
My understanding is that there was, um, an inspection by code enforcement and fire that found some violations in the structure, but those are building code issues, not land use issues, so those aren't, um, relevant to the, the case in front of you. We would presume that, like, just as we would presume of any applicant, that.
It'd be rectified.
They're intending to.
Yep.
Follow the procedures set forward by the town.
And moving to your addendum.
Sure, uh, so, a building permit was originally filed for this site, what was it, February, January? The building inspector issued a letter of denial, the only item that he listed in that letter of denial was, uh, residential density. So the existing building is, uh, at least a hundred years old, um, the existing lot configuration is decades old, so we would consider to have non-conforming status, um, as is with a twenty foot setback. The issue is that by changing from a mixed use building to a purely multifamily residential building, the required setbacks go from twenty feet to fifty feet. So there are two ways, there are two potential ways to interpret that situation. One is that a non-conforming building exists on site and that there is no change in the relationship between the building and the lot line. So if the building is ten feet away from the lot line now, after the change of use, it's still going to be ten feet away from the lot line. The other way to interpret it is that currently a building is encroaching ten feet into the setback, after the change in use, a building will be encroaching forty feet into a setback and therefore it is increasing the non-conformity, which would not be permitted.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Sure.
I, I just thought of this, so the change in use, it, it actually is currently a multifamily property, right?
The most recent use of record from a site plan perspective was a mixed use building. Um, the, e- essentially.
I mean, because we're talking, because as I think about this, we're talking about the fact that not only is the footprint not changing in relationship to the lot line, but there have been multiple residential units in the property all along.
Right.
Well, not all of them, that only dates back.
Well, but.
That is approved.
The definition of multifamily residential is three units or more, so a duplex wouldn't trigger that definition.
Okay, that's what I, that's.
And I would not say that, uh, a change of use just by abandoning the commercial aspect would be grandfathering a multi-unit residential use. So I brought this to the building inspector's attention and he, his interpretation was the latter of the two, was that, um, yes, by, uh, changing the use, technically you are increasing the non-conformity because you're increasing the encroachment into a setback. To be honest, that should have been in the letter of denial that was issued before the applicant filed for ZBA, um, but it was not, so presumably the applicant would have asked for a second set of relief from the ZBA and it would have been discussed Monday night and we would have a decision by now, um, but that didn't happen. So the course of action that I am proposing in this case, because it was a staff error, um, and I want to talk about the procedure right, I, I'm going to talk about the procedure, but I don't want to, I want to save discussion of the merits of it for after the public hearing, so if you have questions about what I'm suggesting, feel free to ask them. If you have discussion items, hold on to those for a couple of minutes. Charlie and I felt that, uh, an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements was appropriate in this case instead of a variance, because this is just a dimensional issue, um, this is something that has existed for well more than a decade, um, this is something that conceivably, depending on what the prior site plan was changing from, um, this could have been addressed by now in some way, shape or form to legitimize that setback. So we think that under six seventy four thirty three A, the equitable waiver of dimensional requirements is the way to go, that is a lower burden of proof than a variance, um, and in my opinion, um, I think this is a, a pretty solid fit for a case that fits those criteria. Obviously, the final determination would be up to the ZBA, but in my opinion and in Charlie's opinion, we think this is something that fits that model. So with that in mind, I am suggesting that if the, uh, planning board is otherwise amenable to approving this application tonight, that you require, um, the equitable waiver of dimensional requirements or, uh, other relief as may be deemed necessary as a condition of approval, rather than postponing your decision solely on that point to wait another month for the ZBA to have time to act. And again, that's because we as staff probably should have caught that previously to give the applicant an opportunity to file them simultaneously and we didn't.
In the, not disputing your point, but just want to be clear on the timeframe for this, if we postpone our decision till next month, which would be April twenty fifth, ZBA meets on April twenty second, am I correct?
They would meet the Monday before the Wednesday meeting, whatever those days are.
Yeah, okay, whatever the day is, but they have Monday before the Thursday. And theoretically, they could make a decision on that, but they don't, they would not be required to, because they, this would be additional notice for the ZBA if we, if we, if we went to variance.
So there are, there are a few, um, things for why I don't think that we can have this on the April agenda, the primary one being, up until now, we've been operating with hand drawn site plans, um, and in, part of that is an understandable, um, desire on the part of the applicant to seek approvals prior to closing the sale, before then paying for a survey for the septic design.
Okay.
For the equitable waiver, I think we would have to have that certified plot plan, because the point of that relief would be to say, you have the right to encroach to within this distance of the lot line and we would want that survey to know exactly on the applicant's part, how close they are entitled to get.
Sure. I'm just not so much weighing my options, but seeing, trying to figure out all.
Sure, so, so the reason that I proposed doing it this way was in part a good show of faith, that if we think that this is a suitable site plan, that we would approve it as a suitable site plan and essentially then the, uh, equitable waiver would be lining up with the septic design plan in terms of when those, uh, when that survey would be completed, when those materials would be delivered and when you would be signing off.
Okay. Questions from the board, questions as opposed to discussion? Just want to be clear about that, because I want to open up to public comment.
Point of information, just, when was this, James, do you know, um, on record for a, um, mixed use approval, when, when did it occur?
I don't know what the effective date of that site plan approval was off the top of my head.
Before I lived in town.
Hmm?
Before I lived in town.
Yeah, more than twenty, it was more than twenty years because it was, it was that way when I moved here event, so almost.
Okay, so if it's been a dentist's office for twenty years, it's possible, but it predates the current iteration of the.
I think at least thirty years.
We're getting head nods from a butter, so. It, let me say, it formed a butter.
Okay.
So, okay.
The nineteen hundreds.
That's how it was built.
That was a millennium ago.
Yeah, okay.
And so the, and the primary, the primary concern, I, I just, because I'm not looking at the plan, is the barn, is the.
You want to look at the plan?
No.
Tell you what, if you look at the plan, I can open public comment.
That's good, okay.
At this time, I will open public comment. We have one abutter and she is welcome to speak first. And I hate to say it, but you'll have to state your name.
Turn it on.
Gary trumps you even then.
Thank you. Linda Smith, Old Turnpike Road. I'd just like to say that I think that this is probably the best use of this property, converting it to all residential uses, I think that based on the conditions of the variance that was granted, uh, it takes an older home, historical home, that had at one point been, uh, all residential and it puts it back to that. The structure itself is, uh, unique in that it is, uh, it does have frontage on First New Hampshire and access, vehicle access and, but however, the structure itself is on the very back end of the property and it's more or less feels as if it's a home on Old Turnpike Road. And I just would also like to say that, uh, the having, and in, in light of the fact that there is an easement across, uh, another residential parcel for this lot, that putting a commercial back on that property would be bringing a lot of traffic back over someone else's property, back onto this one, uh, but I, I think that it would enhance the, the neighborhood and enhance the community, uh, to have it as a multifamily unit, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just one other comment, I would just like to say that, uh, in light of the reality of real estate transactions, that if there's any way that a board can in fact, uh, make decisions that would, uh, make that, uh, you know, the plan work for them, I would encourage that.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we have any other butters present, but if there's other members of the public who would like to speak. who would like to speak on this application, you're welcome to do so at this time. You can speak, you're a member, you're a resident.
Opportunity to stand in the microphone and be on camera. I have to do it. Pam Sanderson, Old Turnpike Road, 132. I'm about five houses, four houses down from where the, the property is. One thing that concerns me, I am a member of the zoning board, not here is that capacity, and I would not tell you or speak for the board. Personally, my concern is on the failed septic system. Currently, there are people living in the building. The owner has not necessarily fulfilled the idea of the dentist shop or dentist's office being permitted to be a resident, and he's already got people in there. So we've got a failed system. Again, you know my precious Flat Meadow Brook is right abutting this property, and it is not necessarily the Flat Meadow Brook, but it is Flat Meadow Meadow that is the abutter of this property. So we've got a concern, environmental concern with Flat Meadow feeding into Northwood Lake. So the sooner we get that septic system in, and they are willing to do it, this behooves and benefits the town, it benefits the lake, and I, I would like to see it occur, but it has to occur by the book. So that would be my only point. So I'm in favor of it occurring by the book. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You get to be on TV.
Just note for the record for full disclosure, Ms. Sanderson is in a butter to the board current chair. Okay, at this time, hearing no further interest in public comments, I'll close public, the public comment section.
So I have.
Questions?
Heard a question or two that kind of generated out of this.
Okay.
My understanding is, Linda made reference to, and we know it was previously a dental office, but that, my understanding is that, that commercial status has expired, for lack of.
If we approve this, it will, it expired.
Well.
Whether they're taking advantage of it or not currently.
It was brought to our attention that it had been abandoned for lack of use as a commercial space.
And what, the timeframe on that had.
I believe this has been abandoned for multiple years at this point, so it exceeds that threshold.
Yeah. Well, I mean, so, I mean, the concern that it might go back to commercial, that would have to be a separate approval were that to be a proposal.
Change it back?
Well, or to activate.
It would need site plan approval from this board.
What?
It, we would, we would want them to get site plan approval from this board.
So in this case, it's been suggested to be a residential, so.
Well, actually, it's technically, as, as we're understanding it, it's technically nothing right now, right? So at some point, someone's going to have to come in.
Well, the use of that space is a residential space now.
Right.
Or, or to be, to be one.
Right.
The, the earlier reference to the setbacks, was primarily the barn that was the encroachment?
Both.
Potential?
From my looking on the aerial imagery, it's both the barn and the building labeled as a dwelling. The barn on the encroachment to that little point on the side setback, the dwelling to the side setback, I measure at about 30 feet on the aerial imagery.
Is that to the road? When you're saying that to the dwelling, are you referring to the?
So the building labeled dwelling.
Yep.
I measure the, on the aerial imagery, the closest point of that dwelling across the gravel driveway to.
Okay.
The side setback to be about 30 feet, but also then the dwelling to the Old Turnpike Road property line, I measure at about 10 to 12-ish.
I, I was presuming, I wasn't looking at, to scale here, but I was using dimensions off of the adjoining, the lot line.
So essentially, if we were looking at 50-foot setbacks, we would have three points of concern in terms of the setback to existing structures.
Both the dwelling, both the barn, both the dwelling and barn, and the dwelling to the side lot over the gravel driveway and the dwelling to the, to the street.
Correct.
Old Turnpike, Old Turnpike Road, yeah. Okay. All right. But, but do we know, by the way, that that's just further along that line, that the lot line that's adjoining, let's say, I'm going to say it's a, if this is north oriented, but the, the lot line that's adjoining the gravel driveway, let's just put it that way, is that, is, is that existed for some while?
To my understanding, that's existed for decades.
Yeah.
In its current configuration.
There's an, there's an abutter over there, somebody. Yep.
And that house is also quite close to the, the, a butter on the west side is also quite, the residence is quite close to the lot line.
And the house was always close to the road, I assume, going back quite a ways.
About the same era.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So we have, unless there are more questions? We have waivers, two waivers to deal with.
Four waivers.
Four waivers?
Can I clarify something again? I'm sorry, before we go to the waivers.
Five.
Regarding what James said, yeah. We're by, by going ahead with some degrees of approval here, let's, let me back up on that. So the concern you had, as visibly the ZBA, was that they were not apprised of this particular, what we just got through discussing as far as encroachments, potential encroachments, 50-foot setback requirement?
My primary concern is that the applicant wasn't apprised and therefore didn't have the opportunity to request that relief simultaneously, correct?
So the ZBA didn't know about it either, yeah.
Right.
And the, if we went in a kind of straightforward way, this would have to go again before the ZBA, they would have to look at this issue that you now aware of.
If we did it in the most by-the-book, best-practice way possible, typically, we would require those ZBA actions to be in place. But again, because that was a staff error, the applicant said, we would like to do everything that we need to, and we failed to tell them a thing they needed to do, I am recommending that we move forward with the decision and not hold it up on that account.
Now, I'm going to ask you, I realize this is a judgment call, but the, the ZBA was certainly aware that, or everybody, that 20-foot might be the issue. But was there any concerns that the ZBA indicated where this was a, was a real sticking point? I mean, it seems to me that.
I would prefer not to try to represent the opinion of the board.
I guess when, yeah, I realize.
Setbacks were not a, a large factor of the discussion, again, since the issue before them was that residential density, that essentially the intensity of the residential use was their primary focus.
That seems to me the bigger allowance that they okayed, the bigger issue, six acres to roughly five acres, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, no, I, I misread your outline, so yeah, there, I see the five waivers.
Sorry, it jumped under the bat.
Okay, not a problem.
It had to have a page break somewhere.
Sure, sure, no problem. They are in, well, I would accept the motion to approve waivers to, and I'll do these in two groups, 7B1B and 7B4 to this application. Somebody wanted to make that motion and seconded for discussion.
Where are you, and the reference to that?
If you look at the town planner comments on date of 3/27.
3/27.
3/27. Bottom of the page, waivers requested.
Before the board acts on B, and this isn't an objection to handling these two together, since that is phrased as to accept an existing site plan and/or aerial imagery in lieu of the required location plan and existing conditions plan, neither of those things were resubmitted as part of this, so I would suggest that we would add either a photocopy of that plan that we stick in the file or aerial imagery, i.e. a printout of Google Maps as an additional item to be submitted under the update of site plan as follows.
Copy that Joe has is not part of the application?
That is the site plan.
Right.
Proper.
Oh.
It's not an existing conditions plan.
Okay.
Technically, nor is it.
Okay, fine, good point, yes.
So you're not suggesting under B to accept an existing site plan?
That's not an existing site plan.
So I think in the case of representing exactly where things are, the aerial imagery works better as an existing conditions, de facto, yeah, evidence of what's on the ground. So I think I'd rather just have a printout of Google Maps.
Let's clarify, that, that's for B1B. This is, this is under B1B, and the printout would be under B4.
The printout would be B4, correct.
So we don't have a.
That would, I think I can answer this, that would save my exact confusion, because you're not changing anything dimensionally.
Right. Correct.
Inside or outside.
It's just a difference of what best represents each of those. And I think in that case, if we don't have somebody who's surveying the property again, it, it's easiest just to have the aerial imagery showing where that is. Fun fact, MapGeo is still active, and that would probably be the best way to show the property line in relation to the aerial imagery.
So per se, we don't have anything that's dimensioned.
For existing conditions, correct.
And so you're suggesting the aerial survey serve as the.
Existing conditions.
The best representation of what exists.
Okay. So if somebody wanted to make that motion for those two waivers, labeled A and B.
All right, I'll make that motion. We're talking waivers requested, 1A.
1A and 1B on things, but to actually, section 7B1B and 7B4. Or you can do it wherever you want to.
Seven, when you're saying, okay.
I'm saying, because they're both dealing with site plans and, and drawings, that we could.
Those two together.
Put those two together on one motion. Generally, on waivers, best practice is to do each waiver independently.
So now A and B as.
But if we did A and B together, because they're both dealing with drawings, I would be accepting of that.
All right. 1, A and B as designated to become.
To approve the waivers, four sections.
I mean, you can phrase this, I mean, you're combining them, so really, we still have them as separate entities there, so I'm just, how do you want to say that? I'll approve it, I mean, I'll, I'll.
To approve the waiver for section 7B1B and section 7B4.
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Second.
I apparently made the motion, sorry, Joe.
That's good, you can make it.
Ms. Baldwin made the motion, and Ms. Boudreau seconded it. Discussion on those two waivers. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, those abstaining, okay. Thank you. The next three waivers, C, D, and E for sections nine, D, F, and Q, because they all deal with one section nine, I would suggest a, you can do those the same way in one motion, but it makes no difference to me, because I'm not making the motion.
Wait a minute, are we, are we going to waiver sewage? Section nine F sewage?
So the sewage waiver, again, because the applicant is seeking the approvals now prior to the sale, so that they know whether they have the permissions in hand or not, they requested to put off the submission of a septic plan, again, until they knew whether they had the, the conditional approvals in hand. So instead of requiring the submission of the septic design plan now, what granting this waiver would do would say that we can accept those plans as a condition subsequent of approval, and they need that state permit in place prior to a building permit.
As specified in the ZBA requirement.
So they can sell the property, they just can't build it.
Yeah. But I mean, this is not waiving the requirement for.
It's not, not waiving the requirement that they have to have a state-approved septic design on file before they can use that third residence. It's just postpone, it's putting that off one more step.
All right, let me, let me clarify if I can. So we're at C there, section nine D, stormwater drainage, forego submission of a drainage plan. I mean, there was a concern by one of our residents that water from this site not, and it was in specific reference to the current failed septic system, but not enter this brook that feeds, so.
So, so those are two separate issues. One would be how the sewage of the sanitary waste is disposed. The other is how stormwater runoff would interact.
Those are two separate issues that I'm wondering.
Right, and so, so while it is true that the septic system is currently in failure, that is an issue that would be remedied by having a new septic design that is not in failure. The logic for the, to forego a stormwater plan is that nothing is changing on site, so there will be no change to the stormwater flow on site. The stormwater will continue to flow to the exact same places, pre and post change of use.
Yeah. Okay, that's clarified, thanks.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to any or all of those.
Well, we have to each one be done separately, don't we, at this point?
It's just best practice, but it doesn't matter. I split them up by section. If you want to do one by one, we can do one by one. You can do all three, because they're all together for, for section nine.
Well, the last one, just to comment on E, construction sidewalks, we haven't required that anywhere else.
Exactly.
That's a standard waiver.
Well, let's say that many applicants have requested it, and in generally, general, we have, we have agreed, or we have granted the waiver. I wouldn't go so far as to say it's a standard.
I'll make a motion, just to proceed here, that we accept C, D, E, section, well, references to section nine D, nine F, and nine Q.
Okay, motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. Baldwin. Further discussion on granting the waivers. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, those abstaining, okay. Okay. So we just have your note on James's note, or town planner's note on number two, that just add a note to the sketch or drawing, whatever you have, submit that the waivers have been granted. Okay, and did you get a chance to review the town planner's notes?
Yeah.
Okay, I figured you had, but I always like to ask sometimes. And I, what I like to do as well is read over them with the boards, if the board's aware of them. If you have anything to say, it's your time to do so. And I will probably reiterate them, so, just to make sure that you're aware of it.
Yeah.
Can I?
We've been caught before, just as we're making the motion, that people thought had a chance to think about it.
Yeah, perfect, that's perfectly fine.
After the fact thought, I mean, it doesn't bear on the waivers that are just granted, but the, the ZBA said no more than seven bedrooms. The two existing units have how many bedrooms each?
Two.
Yeah, two, two each.
Two each, that's four. So they're allowing for the possibility of three. So they're allowing for the possibility of three in the.
Old dentist's office.
Pardon?
The old dentist's office.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Chance, the board has a chance to read over the existing recommended conditions and we have two of those.
So I think on my list now, I can just go through them so.
Sure, if you want to.
People can ask questions if they come up. So prior, conditions prior to the signing of plans, number one, to make changes to the site plan as follows. A, to remove the gravel driveway depicted extending from Old Turnpike Road from the plan. B, label the dwelling as a three-unit dwelling, since that's what's proposed. C, include a title block that meets the minimum standards for a minimal impact site plan with details as follows. D, add the names, addresses, and map and lot numbers of abutting property owners whose property is depicted on the plan. So as I mentioned previously when we were discussing the waivers, I would add E, submit aerial imagery, and we would like that to also include a title block with those five items. Condition number two, provide written confirmation from NHDOT District 6 confirming that the existing driveway design can accommodate expected traffic from the proposed change of use or provide an updated NHDOT driveway permit.
Question on that. Have you talked to DOT at all on this? Okay.
Our, our anticipation is that, yeah, it's a less intense use, so we're not expecting any.
More curious than anything else. Sometimes, the other thing to be aware of in our history with DOT is that it might take a, quite a while.
Yeah.
To get the final approval.
Yeah.
Usually they will, if you request, they will give you a preliminary, what was the term that they used?
They have in the past given us an intent to issue.
That's what it is, thank you.
Email that we've accepted as documentation for the purpose of signing plans.
Yeah, that's, that's on our list for this week, for next week.
So after condition two, I would jump over to the addendum. Condition three, provide three copies of the final plan for signature. That's a standard and I was just a dum-dum and forgot to put it on my list. Number four would be to require an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements pursuant to 67433A, which shall be approved by the ZBA. I would add the note or other relief as deemed necessary in case we get a legal opinion that says, actually, that's not the proper procedure, but barring a legal opinion that says it's not necessary or you should follow some other procedure, that's how we're intending to proceed.
Okay. Let's bring that up for discussion currently. So essentially what planning board is doing if we approve this conditionally with that, we are throwing it back to the ZBA for 67433.
We're saying the issue of increased setbacks is a zoning issue that must be addressed in some capacity.
Okay.
And we are approving the site plan provided that relief is granted.
And if the relief is not granted?
If the relief is not granted, then they have not met the conditions of approval for the site plan.
Right.
And that's a zoning issue that would preclude that use.
So then they would come back, need to come back.
So theoretically, if you were thinking about the dentist office as being abandoned and renovation of that into a new use was interpreted as renovation of the property by 50% or more, this is an issue that we're going to have to resolve at some point anyway, regardless.
More thinking, just, just laying out the scenarios for your next steps if for some reason the ZBA doesn't grant that.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately.
I can't imagine they would, wouldn't, but.
Yeah, ultimately, if we're stuck with a, well, we're not stuck with any. Let's just be clear. We can walk away from this stuff. If the owner is stuck with a big vacant unit downstairs, right, there's going to be a case for hardship, I believe, so, you know, I think.
More.
Hopefully, we won't get to that point.
Hopefully, we won't. More trying to get my head around it as well for.
Oh, welcome to the club. We've spent a lot of time doing that.
I'm sure. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead. I think you were at, prior to.
So those are, those four conditions would all be prior to the signing of plans.
Right.
Prior to the issuance of a building permit. So then, jumping back over and renumbering, condition five would be to provide an updated septic design plan prepared by a licensed septic designer and approved by the state of New Hampshire. Prior to the occupancy of the third unit, number six, a state-approved septic system will be installed. Number seven, the area of the quote gravel driveway from Old Turnpike Road shall be ceded, landscaped, or otherwise modified to discourage site access.
Let me, the word discourage, that, it strikes me, I mean, either it's not going to have access or it is. Discourage is in the weaker category. I'm just.
Drive it across.
So, as it stands right now, there is no driveway permit that's been issued for that, so even though it looks like a driveway, it's not allowed to be a driveway.
Right.
So technically, right now, nobody's allowed to use that driveway.
But.
So the reason I phrased it this way was to be a little bit flexible as far as, well, if we put grass so it no longer looks like a driveway, does that mean people are going to stop driving over the lawn? Maybe, maybe not. If we put trees there, does that mean nobody's going to try and drive through the trees onto the site? We're, we're sort of moving from varying degrees of discourage. I wanted to make.
Sure. If you didn't.
Flexible language, but obviously, the board and the applicant can discuss what might be the most appropriate solution for that.
Well, I don't know what the.
Change that language.
Okay. I don't know what the ZBA's position was and how firm it was, but if it was.
The ZBA's position is that all access to the site shall be from Route 4.
Okay.
So officially, everybody should be entering that site from Route 4. The logic, regardless of whether it looks like a driveway or not, the logic for having some kind of landscaping there is to remove the temptation from the end user, who wouldn't be the applicant, it would be the applicant's tenants.
Sure.
Just so that they wouldn't even think to drive across it because it looks like lawn or it looks like bushes or something.
Okay. That doesn't stop a lot of people, obviously, but I'm just wondering, I don't know what the ZBA was bringing up as an issue, you know, is what their concern was.
Preventing access from Old Turnpike.
Pardon?
Preventing access from Old Turnpike.
Well, I, I just, I don't know how strong it was, is what I'm really getting at. And a fence, for instance.
Pretty strong.
It was strong.
Yeah.
What?
It was strong.
It was strong. Okay. Okay.
Electric fence, strong.
Well, let me just say, grass doesn't stop anybody in a vehicle that I've ever seen. So.
But eviction does. You know, eviction does. My client has no interest. He's, first off, he owns a landscape business. He's going to come in, he's going to clean that area up, and they're not going to ruin the landscaping. They won't be tenants for very long.
I mean, obviously, something that would slow somebody up is a small fence, big rocks.
My rocks.
That's why.
My rocks.
My rocks. I heartily approve of James's, James's language of discourage. Leave it up to the client.
Well, that's, but we're adding that at this point. That's our language, so I'm just saying.
So in my mind, anything from putting boulders there to installing a fence to, you know, seating it so it didn't look like a driveway, to planting bushes, those are all, in my mind, solutions that would satisfy the language that I've suggested. The flip side of that is that he should also be telling his tenants not to use that access point.
My suspicion and best practices would be that if it happens once and you get another tenant who does it again, the landscaping probably will change.
So language like sufficient to prevent as opposed to discourage?
I think discourage is fine and it gives them the freedom to deal with it.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to honor what the ZBA did here so that we're not, you know.
They've already, but they've already, in the way that they've granted our variance, they've already.
They said no.
We would be, we would be subject to.
You would be in violation. Right. No, I recognize that. Okay.
Run the risk of losing strategic occupancy.
So by adding a little bit of extra flexibility, essentially, we're leaving it to the landlord-tenant relationship to enforce upon the tenants that you won't use this, and we're giving them some flexibility as to escalating options that could.
Yep.
discourage, prevent.
Now, the language of the.
Car.
Language, additional recommendations, condition approval, I didn't hear you phrase it, but I mean, you may have said it there, but the equitable waiver, number two there, equitable waiver, dimensional requirements pursuant to, you, you've incorporated that in your.
Yes. So looking at the two sheets side by side, starting with the sheet that you received on the 27th, I would go number one, which is updating the site plans. Number two, written confirmation from DOT. Switch over to the addendum from this morning. Three, provide three copies of the plan. Four, seek the equitable waiver from the ZBA. All four of those are prior to the signing of plans. Jumping back to the first sheet. Number five, provide the updated septic design plan as prior to the issuance of the building permit. Number six, the state-approved septic system will be installed. And number seven, seating, landscaping, or other modifications to discourage access. Those two would be prior to occupancy of the downstairs unit.
Thank you.
Okay. And you're clear on the plan update, the five points?
Yeah.
The six points? Whatever it is, the five points. Okay. I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
To proceed with James's list, which I didn't memorize.
Which we just read, the seven points. So, second by Ms. Boudreau, motion by Mr. McCaffrey. Further discussion. Hearing none. The only one I'd add to on the five points for the update is leave enough space for either a stamp or my signature somewhere, which doesn't take much. Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. You're good with conditions?
Don't congratulate us yet. We have to come back in a month or two.
You'll be, you'll be here for ZBA, so.
Okay, cool.
And I'll probably be attending that in a second or a while.
For the.
And before the rest, before the rest of the public leaves, I'd like to congratulate you on making this the best-attended planning board meeting in probably three or four years.
Senior component.
Matt, you guys were clear that you're going to come back for the equitable waiver whenever you have the survey done.
We have to go for the. Yep. That's, we'll get, we'll get moving on that. I gotta, now I have to give him some protection.
And I hope you were taking notes. Yeah.
Equitable waivers every time between now and.
More than one fact.
Wasn't that exciting? Do you think you take notes? Because I take notes. Come here.
Linda will want to talk about these. This is a recess, right?
I guess it is. People got up and left, so we're back for recess. Internal business.
I have one item. As most of you are aware, we no longer have a weekly newspaper that supplies us with the opportunity for public notices. Okay, I was just looking to find this here. So I checked in a couple of things. One is, because we're, at least in the short term, we will need to, as far as the planning board, notify using a newspaper of general circulation. There's only really two. And of the two, either Foster's, which is now called Seacoast Online, or the Concord Monitor, both are quite a bit higher cost-wise. So I would like to ask the board to consider requesting the selectmen to adjust the fee for the public notice from $50 to $125. I think that's a bare minimum. I've had some that are $150 using them, but I think for most, if, particularly, if we had more than one applicant, we could put them together and it would cover the cost of the public notice. I know it's a bit uncomfortable and it's a big jump, but it's a reality jump. The Concord Monitor is even higher.
Right.
Higher than, or you're quoting Seacoast.
Cost-wise.
You're quoting Seacoast Online. Okay.
Now, in looking into it a little bit further, I did contact legal at NHMA and, because I, at first I started to look at the statute as to, do we absolutely have to put it in the newspaper for a public hearing? And the statute references for the planning board, the planning board subdivision regulation. So what you have under public notice is what you have to do that's in, in your subdivision regulations. That was confirmed by legal. And what they basically said is, the requirement that it must be in a newspaper is for zoning amendments in all ZBA public hearings. But site plan and subdivision is up to the planning board. However, that would still require a change to the subdivision regulations where it notes in there specifically. Somewhere in here it says, a newspaper of general circulation. Oh, right here. Public notice for minor subdivision and major subdivision applications, but not for boundary line adjustment applications. So we don't have to notice those in the paper. Shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation. So.
So is that everything but boundary line essentially?
Right now. But we've been doing all of them.
Yeah, it's only subdivision.
The cost was.
Acquired for notice.
And what the, the legal was, was that based on this, that would be what site plan would be as well for public notice. So I think we need to do two things. We need to be able to cover revenue, to cover the cost through asking the board of selectmen to have a public hearing and change the fee on that. But also, the planning board could hold a public hearing on this one issue in the subdivision regulations and change it to be something different, such as on the town website in some other public place or whatever, but I would prefer that James.
Could I make a suggestion for, if the select board is changing the fee schedule, it seems to me that the easiest change would be, rather than changing to $125, would be to change it to cover the cost of notice. And that way, if we then change these such that we can have it posted online and it drops below the $125, this select board doesn't have to change their fee schedule again.
Sure. The, but the fee.
The, the effect would be that people will be paying $125 to get it in Foster's. The effect would be that people will be paying $125 to get it in Foster's until we change the subdivision regulations.
That's a good suggestion. The only problem is, is I'm trying to figure out how this is gonna work because theoretically, we would have to do the public notice, send it to the paper, get a price before we could accept a fee from an applicant.
Wouldn't it, isn't, don't they have a stock price for a certain square inch space?
They have to set it up. It depends on how many words are in it.
Well...
I mean, that's achievable, obviously.
$125 was what they quoted you as a typical notice, plus or minus?
No, I went back and looked at what we've paid and it's been in, we're at $150.
That's how I would plan on charging it. That's how I would plan on charging it, is to take, in the period of time until we change our, through public hearing, our notice requirements, which I'm certainly amenable to if I'm still chair next month, that we charge, you know, pull a past example.
Well, that's what I did do.
So, right, right. And just say that's the fee and...
And for the...
If it's, if it's $4, $5 off or less.
We're not concerned about that. That's why I picked a median price.
Exactly.
Sure, I think that's fair enough.
But the problem, the problem is, is that come some point in the future, when we have to do zoning amendments, that could be $500. So, we have to think about that as well, once we get this. So, maybe we need to, maybe James could give that some thought as well. We, we need to first start covering our revenues because if we wait too long, we're gonna be losing a couple of months. We could lose $500 easily or more if we get three or four applications. Because I'm gonna have to notify the board of selectmen that you voted a certain amount and then they wouldn't have a meeting for a couple of weeks. And then, you know, we're gonna be looking at a month or two out. And I'm concerned that we're getting revenue to cover the cost.
Linda, what do other, what do other communities do? I mean, what options are there legally? Are, is, are there any other communities that are using the internet or a town website as a public notice, for instance?
I haven't done a survey.
No, okay.
I'm assuming that most of the towns in this community all use the Sunwee, all saw...
Yeah.
This is a reality that every community in New Hampshire is facing. And honestly, I'm kind of impressed that it took this long. This is an issue that communities across the country have been facing for years.
We're in a changing...
I just hate to spend so much money. No one, do you, I don't get the Foster's.
Well, further, we would have to be consistent because you can't have somebody saying, well, gee, I was expecting to be in Concord, I know it was over in Foster's.
That's the problem with our town. We're not really covered by any newspaper.
And I'm really surprised that NHMA or some other organization or other towns has not, and I intend to ask our state rep to sponsor a bill that would allow all public notices for town septic options, like website.
Well, maybe it exists. That's why I'm, but maybe it already exists. We...
It doesn't. I just got a legal opinion. It still has to be a newspaper for zoning amendments and all ZBA. But the problem Northwood has particularly is we don't have a newspaper.
Nor does many...
We're not Concord, we're not Portsmouth or Dover or...
Lots of small towns don't.
You know, a lot of the smaller towns typically will look at...
Right. Northwood is caught in between the papers that exist.
Right. Down on either end, where folks down that way will look at Foster's where, or...
That's exactly why the forum...
You would said Seacoast Online. Is that an online paper or is that...
Seacoast Online is the parent organization that does Foster's. I think there's a, the Portsmouth Daily Herald is another of their papers.
And Seacoast.
So, Seacoast Online Media is the parent company that publishes it.
It's not online, it's still an actual paper.
Oh, it is online and they make you pay for...
They have online and print.
So, can't we just use the forum then, since that's it?
That was suggested that, but that's online.
Yeah. We, until they, until...
You said Seacoast Online was online. That's why I'm asking.
They're online and in print.
What we need is the state to change the law.
So, their opinion was that an online-only paper does not count as a paper of general circulation?
Correct. It is classified as a newspaper.
As newspapers slowly keep going out of print.
But it's not a paper of general circulation.
General circulation because it's not available on the corner, yet for sale in, in the corner market or through the mail or subscription.
No, it's available online for free.
But online, it's the whole electronic aspect of it.
Sure.
You need a device to access it. And if you don't have that device, you're closed out of it. That's the problem.
But it should be covered by us posting here, the library, post office, the grocery store.
I agree. But state law does not...
Well, according, I mean, according to Linda, I understand the point, newspaper of record. It's not a newsletter of record and it's not a flyer of record.
Would it, would it be cheaper to start a town newspaper?
Can't we have like a monthly, a monthly Northwood news? Linda, you can write it, you know? Like, what would it cost?
How much would it...
It's the printing. It's getting the printing. One page. You were, you were at a school.
But it's no longer a newspaper.
So do you.
It's much more...
You got a mini graff?
Yes.
They also specify the size and sheets.
From the perspective of being former editor of the forum, that when they were doing paper copies of it, the mailing costs for every print copy was in the $3,000 to $5,000, including postage. And that was for a nonprofit, deepest mailing we could get.
How many copies?
$4,000, $5,000.
Can we just get a balance?
I think the news... I think newspaper of record has a, has an additional meaning legally, but...
I think the, the best goal is to get a legislator to change the law. But that's gonna take a little time to accomplish.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
So, it's really two, well, it's a couple of things. Revenue in the short term to cover our costs, change in fee schedule, and what should that be? In the short term, maybe we need to have it be tied to what it is, but in the long term, if we do away with it, we still have that public notice. Maybe we can just incur that as a budget item if it's just once a year.
Separate from this, are we posting these notices on our website?
Yes.
As standalone entities or in any fashion?
No. 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 They just, I just post the agenda.
They're posted as the agenda.
Pardon?
They're posted as the agenda.
But then...
Yeah. But see, we, we could set up, our website is not...
User-friendly.
That's one way to put it.
It could be on there. It's just a matter of putting it on there.
No, but a better, let me just say it this way, a more inclusive, more better, better-designed website could accommodate. I'm not saying this is the solution to this because we're still, the website's not a newspaper of record clearly, but, but at least getting it out there in a very user-friendly positioning. And it would have to be standalone. It could be buried in some page somewhere. It would have to be notices very clearly. But anyway, this would be a good thing to have as part of our website regardless of where we find ourselves spending money. I would just say, as far as, you know, a lot of newspapers are going to object to finding alternatives for postings because this, that's an income for a lot of newspapers.
Last question about the situation. Does Co Brown have a school newspaper?
It's not generally noticed. It's not generally...
I'm just saying if they have the equipment to, to put out a paper, maybe you can somehow include them in making a town-wide paper.
Even the school, our school newspaper doesn't go out. It goes every Friday, but it's all electronic. No one prints it out anymore.
Yeah, I don't imagine...
They don't even print it out anymore?
No. The liquor goes out every Friday via email.
This is probably a link that you look at.
So, for the moment, we need a solution to increase, to ask the board of selectmen to up the fees to accommodate the current...
Well, fund the budget by upping the fees. There you go.
Well, it's not a lot of money, but it's still money.
Oh, we're gonna be going in the holdfast if we go in.
Okay.
Where would we derive the money? Yeah, if we shortfall on this as the planning board accepting applications, where do we, where do we come up with the money? Where do we have them? We don't have the money, right?
It doesn't matter because you only have a certain amount of funds in your budget. If you take in $20,000 in fees, good. It goes in the...
Oh, that's fine, but I'm saying, but our fee right now, fee schedule doesn't accommodate the situation.
Right. We're gonna be, we're gonna be using...
We still have to live within the budget line regardless.
We've already spent some money.
What I'm saying is, we're gonna have a shortfall as far as revenue, anticipated revenue. We're still gonna be able to...
So, we, we want to ask the select board to allow, to make a larger allowance for...
They set fees, yes. We have to ask them to hold the public hearing and set a revised fee. We could make it for...
I would make the recommend...
Six months or whatever.
That's what I was thinking, is why don't we recommend...
Until, until otherwise rectified.
Well, we need to revisit it and I would rather have that on record.
In the meantime, we can deal with what we have. I mean, we can, we can manage with what we...
Well...
I would not say that.
I would say no.
Well, what if somebody shows up tomorrow?
We can, we're gonna overexpend by law.
Very soon.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. In the meantime...
It's three times the price, yeah.
So, in the meantime, it's not like we can't accept applications. It's just that we're gonna have to...
You have to by law.
Yes. So, we're gonna have to deal with what we...
We accept them every other month now. Save money.
So, essentially, if somebody shows up with applications for April, we're gonna have to eat the difference.
Yes.
Ideally, the select board would have this in place by May.
Should we, should we announce there's a special on applications at the planning board?
If you wait till May, we'll give you one free waiver.
Okay. I would make the recommendation to the board of selectmen that we increase our notification fee to $100.
$125, is that?
Maybe a hundred, okay, $125.
That's what she's coming up as a general figure.
That's pretty much the minimum for...
Okay. Just, I was trying, I was gonna say...
You've been generous.
Would that be enough, though?
Yeah.
For a three-month period.
You're just being generous with round numbers.
Subject review in three months.
You're gonna present this to us the next meeting?
So, your thought process being we will have changed the subdivision regulations in three months?
Yes. That would be my...
We're gonna have to have a notice hearing to do that, aren't we?
Four months.
And where will we put that?
We're gonna have to have more advertising, $100 a cost to do it.
Okay.
So, six months? Six months, probably.
Just proposed, just, right, is proposed, you know, I would say is a suggestion.
I don't want to forget about it. And I don't want the select board to forget about it.
Oh, don't worry. I have dreams of the budget.
We won't. We're looking at every penny, so we won't forget.
Okay, fine. Never mind about the timeframe. But I'll, I'll put it on the things for the fall.
Do we need a motion or do you want to...
Yes, please.
Definitely need a motion.
Could we say through the end of 2019, thought process being if this happens to line up with when we're noticing zoning hearings anyway, then we're not paying for an extra hearing if notice is a concern?
Oh, yeah, because we have to notice public hearings.
So, this is for zoning and planning?
Why don't we just kick, why don't we just kick, kick any reminder of date off then? And we'll just put the, the date reminder internally.
How is zoning paying for theirs?
Zoning's up against the same thing.
Can we jointly announce in any way various activities or dates?
They have to. They can't change theirs. They have to continue to notice because they're really gonna be going in the hole.
So, are they talking about changing their fees as well?
They didn't talk about it.
They will at their next meeting.
Okay, I, my...
The select board changes all of the fees, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, if the select board is changing the fee schedule in any way, everyone's, they could proactively do it without a request.
Mm-hmm. And I'm gonna recommend it. Maybe you would. Will you join me in recommending his town stuff?
I am happy to.
Well, I don't know. It might cost us.
I am happy to write a letter to that effect.
My, my further thought was just that since our meetings come very close together, it might be a way to piggyback notices. And this would depend on how the Foster's or somebody is billing out the end space for these things. But maybe could we achieve a little savings temporarily? I'm just throwing it out as an idea.
Do they pay by the line or by the block or...
Well, by the column inch in a paper.
Well, you get a group rate.
The problem of what you're saying, Joe, is oftentimes, just because of timing, just depends on how many applications come in. But the zoning board can go a week later. So, oftentimes, we break them up. And you put them all together, it's gonna get very confusing to be going.
That's a good excuse.
Good idea, but it might be difficult to achieve.
No one's even gonna look for it there.
If you're watching this, start looking in Foster's for...
People aren't gonna...
Well, that can go all...
I, I've gotten the Foster's, I think, once in my 28 years I've lived here.
It's the difference between legal notice and good notice.
Well, I'd go post it on, on one of the chat rooms.
You're better off having a chat page. We talked about having, the town hall having a Facebook page, a non-commenting Facebook page.
They still have me blocked.
If I make...
No, there isn't a town hall one.
It just says Northwood any.
We need a motion to recommend this to the select board?
Yes.
And so, I, a fee, a temporary or for the time being, a fee increase of whatever, however you worded that, $125.
Second motion, second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Caffrey, second by Ms. Baldwin, to increase the notification fee to $125. Further discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, is abstaining.
Well, I understand there's no time limit on it.
Correct. There's no time limit.
Yeah, that's even better because as soon as you do this, you could request it be withdrawn.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Other internal business?
We have dates for the training.
June 1st?
I just ask people to let me know if they're interested or...
Have they announced a schedule or an agenda?
Yes.
They did? Okay.
Yeah, if you wanna take a look at it.
Do you have a little flyer on that or available?
They can't, they can't afford to print it out.
I'll send you one separate, Joe. I'll send you one.
What? Oh, you're gonna send me an email?
Yeah.
In general, I'd like to go.
Yeah, she sent it out, but it was like two weeks ago, so you probably didn't get it.
Yes, they did.
I was incognito at that point or something, yeah.
Well, that's why I could have missed. I managed not to purge it when I purged my email.
Any correspondence, anything else, correspondence needed to deal with?
No, we'll do election of officers at the work session.
I'd be very hesitant to do it with a bare quorum. I think I might know the result, but I don't know.
So, is that it? I'm gonna...
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.